May I ask anyone, please rise for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning, everybody. This time we do have... We do have one employee that's getting recognized today, Raleigh Brink, from the Maintenance Department that's down at the jail. He's got 25 years of service. Raleigh's not here. We do appreciate his service and his hard work he's done for the county. Item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 27th meeting with the change... just one change in public comments. Jean Roth's name is R U H F, I believe. Or you do, Jean. I'll second that with the change on Jean's name.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number two.
I make a motion to approve item number two as listed on the agenda at still 9:00. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to recess Commissioners and open salary board at 9:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Salary board is open. Item number one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 13th salary board meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item one on the agenda. Prove the minutes of the March 13th salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number two.
I make a motion to approve item number two as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item two on the agenda. Amend the current starting salary for the non-union full-time position of Chief Clerk to $55,000 per year with a scheduled increase of $60,000 upon successful completion of six-month probation. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number three.
I make a motion to approve item number three with creating the starting salary as opposed to amending. I'll second that with the change.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item three to create the starting salary of the non-union full-time position of Director of Assessment slash Chief Assessor to $47,000 per year. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item four.
I make a motion to pass item number four as stated on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by First Deputy Treasurer to... and second by Commissioner Arnold to approve item four to eliminate the position of First Deputy Treasurer effective April 10th, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number five.
I make a motion to pass item number five as stated on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by First Deputy Tax Claim Treasurer, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to create the three full-time union eligible positions of Second Deputy Treasurer Tax Claim at $12.45 per hour. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve item number six as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by the Patonatory Clerk of Courts, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to approve item six, create the two full-time union eligible positions, Second Deputy Patonatory Clerk of Courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item seven.
I make a motion to recess the salary board and return to the Commissioners' meeting at 9:03. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to recess the salary board and return to the Commissioners' meeting. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the Commissioners' meeting. Item 3. Item number two. There's written three, I'm sorry. Oh, two again.
Actually, three. Three. I'll make a motion to approve the cash disbursements and electronic payments. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item... should be three on the agenda, listed as two. Ratify or approve the following cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion to approve the next agenda item with the seminar requests and payments for seminar requests. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the... and ratify the seminar request for payments for seminar requests. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number five.
I make a motion to approve item number five as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Item five is... was listed as item four. Item five, motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to ratify and accept the gratification of Marissa Thorne from the position of 911 telecommunicator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item... item five, which is now item six.
I make a motion to approve the new item six as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item six on the agenda. Ratify and approve the transfer of Robert Height Jr. from the position of Director of Assessment, Chief Assessor, to the open full-time, non-union position of Chief Clerk of Signing Side $55,000. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item six is now item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the new item seven. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the new item seven. Transfer is approved from the position of Assistant Director of Assessment to the open, full-time, non-union position of Director of Assessment. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number seven, which is now item number eight.
I make a motion to approve the new item number eight as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item eight, acknowledge transfer of Sue Blazer from the position of Second Deputy Tax Claim to the open, full-time, union-eligible position of Second Deputy Treasury Tax Claim, $12.45 per hour. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, which is now number nine.
I make a motion to approve that number nine as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the new number nine, acknowledge transfer of Sandra Henny from the position of Second Deputy Treasurer to the open, full-time, non-union-eligible position of Second Deputy Treasury Tax Claim. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve the new number 10 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the new item 10, acknowledge transfer of Julian Smith from the position of Second Deputy Clerk of Courts to the open, full-time, union-eligible position of Second Deputy Patonatory Clerk of Courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 10, which is now item 11.
I make a motion to approve item... the new item 11 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the new item 11 on the agenda, acknowledge transfer of Christine Tingley from the second... position of Second Deputy Patonatory to the open, full-time, union-eligible position of Second Deputy Patonatory Clerk of Courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item seven, which is now eight.
No. Well, actually, it's the new item 12.
Your 12, you're right.
It's a motion to return to the salary board at 9:07 a.m. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to return to the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
Now back to the salary board.
All right. Motion number eight as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by First Deputy Tax Claim Treasurer and seconded by Commissioner Warren to eliminate the position of Second Deputy Treasurer effective April 11th, 2019, per the recommendation of Treasurer Jason Moore. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine.
I motion item number nine. I'll second that.
Motion by First Deputy Treasurer Tax Claim, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item nine, eliminate the position of Second Deputy Tax Claim, effective April 11th, 2019, per the recommendation of Jason Moore. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. I make a motion, we approve number 10 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Patonatory Clerk of Courts, seconded by Commissioner Warren to eliminate the two positions of Second Deputy Clerk of Courts effective April 11th, per the recommendation of that Patonatory Clerk of Courts. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11.
I make a motion, we approve item 11 as listed on the agenda. Second.
Motion by Patonatory Clerk of Courts, seconded by Commissioner Warren to eliminate the position of Second Deputy Patonatory effective April 11th, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board? None? Number 12.
Make a motion to close the salary board at 9:09. Second.
Make a motion to close the salary board and return to the Commissioners' meeting at 9:09. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Back to the Commissioners' meeting. We are now...
New 13.
We are now... Back at 9:09. We are now on item 13. The vote says eight.
I'll make a motion to approve the new item 13 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 13 on the agenda, amend the motion approving the hiring of Nicole Colton of Brackney as the position of Part-Time Corrections Officer. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item nine is now 14.
I make a motion to approve the new item 14 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 14 on the agenda, accept the regret to resignation of Brian James in position of Human Resources Administrative Coordinator. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number 10, which is now 15.
I make a motion to approve item number 15 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 15 on the agenda, approve the appointment of Robert Height as Siskiyou County Open Records Officer effective April 10, 2019. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 11 is now 16.
I make a motion to approve item number 16 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 16 on the agenda, appoint the following as stated to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee of the Slock for a term of... to begin April 11th, 2019 through December 31st, 2021. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item number 12.
Which is 17.
Which is 17.
I make a motion to approve the new item 17 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 17 to enter a purchase of service agreement with Kids Peace National Centers for Child Welfare Services for the attachments from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried.
I make a motion to approve the new item 18 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve the new item 18 on the agenda, to enter a service... purchase of service agreement with Summit School Incorporated Herman P.A. for Child Welfare Services. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Item 14, which is now the new item 19.
I make a motion to approve item number 19 on the agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve the new item 19 on the agenda, approve the following tax claim bureau exoneration request as stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 15, which is now item 20.
I make a motion to approve item number 20 on the agenda. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Warren to approve item 20 on the agenda, to approve proclamation 201907 as April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Questions or comments? Ladies, anything you want to say?
Sure. My name is Tiffany Benedict, and I am the program manager of the Community Resource Center in Susie County. And we know that April is also Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And after our meeting today, we have flags and a sign that we're going to be planting. In the last year, we have served 143 survivors of sexual assault in our county. And then later this evening, at the Montrose United Methodist Church, we're collaborating with our partners at the Child Advocacy Center to do awareness rocks that are in T.O. for sexual assault and also blue for child abuse prevention as an activity to kind of engage the community in just being mindful of the violence that occurs in our community and some things that we can do to help prevent.
What time is that at?
Tonight it's 3:30 to 6:30. We're actually going to do it again on the 19th. The Community Resource Center allowed us to use their space to do rock painting again. So there'll be a second opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for what you do and for keeping the awareness out there so people know. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16, which is now the new item 21.
I make a motion to approve item number 21 as listed on the agenda. I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold to approve item 21, advertise for public bid, the attached list of county surplus items, which will be available for public examination, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. on Monday, April 22nd, 2019, in and about the maintenance office at the courthouse. Seal bids must be submitted in the Chief Clerk's office by 12:00 p.m. on May 3rd. Seal bids will be open during Commissioners' meeting on Wednesday, May 8th. Accessible bidders will be notified by telephone on May 9th. They must remit payment, physically claim their items by 4:00 p.m. on May 13th. County employers are not eligible for... non-eligible bidders for county surplus items. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Okay, we are at public comment. Do you have something you wanted to share?
Sure. So my name is Ashley Kilmer, and I am part of an organization called the Susquehanna County Recreation Center. And we are trying to plan a community... Yeah, we already flipped those around, so we don't have... So we want to build a community recreation center in Susquehanna County. So far, we're a grassroots organization that has gone through the necessary steps to plan... to plan accordingly and try to fund this project. You know, we want to increase health and wellness opportunities for Susquehanna County, for families and all sorts of individuals. We just announced that we're moving forward with the Kingsley location. So it's a big step for us, very excited. We had some awesome feedback from our social media website, and one quote was, "Such exciting news and so needed. Thank you to everyone working to make this happen." Another one, "Wow, probably the smartest thing this area could have ever done. Who knows how many kids this place may save." I'm super excited to announce, you know, this location because in order for us to move forward, we've partnered with Hemler and Kamai Architects, as well as Sardoni Construction. So as we move forward, we're going to have the budget for the project so that we can apply for the appropriate funding. And the reason for, you know, coming today to create awareness about our project, they do have some handouts. We are looking for partners financially as well, so we're going to need to have a private component to this. We're going to launch a capital campaign once our, you know, our budget is back. We're going to need some, you know, public funding as well. We're looking to see maybe what part the Commissioners want to play in the success of this facility. So that's, you know, our question to you guys today was, where do you, you know, where do you see this being a fit? We feel, and Resource Day was a perfect opportunity to connect with the resources already in the county. Gave me a really good chance to see familiar faces from that day to just validate what we're trying to do and how we can be a platform for the resources already established. Meeting spaces, you guys talked about the rock painting event that you're going to have, and something like that, we would have space to accommodate those things, 4-H youth groups. We envision a walking track, a risen walking track, an indoor playground, turf area, corded area, meeting rooms, fitness center, all sorts of these things that would just fill the needs that are in the county, be attractive for people to move into the county. You know, again, not just for youth. Everybody hears about something like this, they're thinking, oh, it's just for kids? Absolutely not. We've seen, you know, many seniors say, hey, I just want a safe place to walk in the winter. I just want to play cards and connect with people. That's the need we're trying to fill. So any support would be greatly appreciated. We have a website, and we have Facebook page and an Instagram account that you guys can kind of follow us on. Again, I have a handout here if anybody wants any as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public? Any comments?
Recent... I'm Terry Rockwell, Dana's father and owner for County Commissioner. Recently on Facebook, I read something about alleging bullying as part of the bootstrap campaign against voters or whatever, people. Can anybody give me an example of that? Has anybody heard of this bullying?
Well, unfortunately, this is a Commissioners' meeting, and we don't do politics in a Commissioners' meeting. So if you want to talk to any of us outside after, I'd be more than glad to.
Okay. If anybody, you know, has any proof or examples of bullying, I'd like to hear about it.
Like I said, this is not a political platform in here at the Commissioners' meeting. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I have two things that I came today for. One was, I'm sorry, I can't speak very loudly now. To make sure that you guys have the Lyme disease awareness for... on the board for May. And the second thing is, we've been having, again, a lot of problems with our network dropping out. I know you guys have been instrumental in trying to get some better services in the area. So who do we talk to and where do we go to get some better... Just for an instance, right now, it's not just... I mean, I put my appointment on hold because I've been dropped out a week ago and can't get anything done. But this morning, I was also told that there was a situation with putting lines on hold for the summer, too. You're supposed to get some kind of discount. And of course, the same company is dropping the ball. There's over a $300 bill because they didn't put it on hold like they were supposed to. So there's lots of problems as far as communication altogether. And there's been call after call, ticket after ticket for that one account alone, and I know that there's more.
Which provider are you dealing with?
That's Frontier.
Frontier?
And where can we go to get them? Like I said, there's been repeated telephone calls at least monthly, if not more, since this person's been on vacation. And like I said, bills over $300 now. They just refuse to pay it because they won't shut it down like they're supposed to.
Well, the next step for you would be call Public Utility Commission and talk to them. So you're aware of what we've been doing. Of course, internet service in this county has been a disaster for a long time. We do have RFPs right now for a dark fiber loop through the county. Again, that's the middle mile of everything. It doesn't do to your house. It creates a system so that the end providers like Frontier, Spectrum, and everybody else can hook to that and then get to your house. Because that's part of our problem, the middle mile isn't here. We don't have the speed, we don't have the connectivity. So we are working on that. We've been working on that for some time now. We've been working with other counties that are already doing it. There's a couple that are a little bit ahead of us that we've been watching to see what their progress is so we know... so we don't make the same mistakes they do. We didn't want to be the guinea pig in this one. So we are still moving forward. We're trying to get the analysis done to see how we can get this dark fiber loop in. It'll take a public-private partnership on this. I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars to get this project to go. But once it's in, it'll give us the internet service that businesses need and people need at their homes so they can do things. We have two businesses right now. One business that's sitting idle, two businesses that aren't even open yet because they can't get internet service. And there was Spectrum. I've been on the phone the last two weeks with Spectrum, trying to get those facilities hooked up. And I'm being stonewalled by everybody at Spectrum. So again, after this meeting, I'm calling the Public Utility Commission to report Spectrum. We have the Conservation District building a new building down on Ellsworth Drive. They have no internet service, so they can't move into the building. We also have in... Down on Ellsworth, we have Baker Corporation's been there eight months. They don't have internet service. They've been waiting. And Diaz just put his transfer station in. He can't open because he doesn't have internet service. And it's Matt running a line on four poles to get the service there. But apparently, when Spectrum did it, they only requested a permit from Pennalec for three poles instead of four. So they got the permit from Pennalec, but then still couldn't do anything because they didn't have the fourth one. So today, as of yesterday, we got the permit from Pennalec approved. So now it's back in Spectrum's hands again. But again, Spectrum, the best they'll tell us is sometime before the end of the month, they should be out there to run a line. So we are still portioning to try to get something done. It's a huge problem with the service and the internet that we are working on.
Is there anything as far as, you know, how often there should be upgrades for the lines that they do have as well?
I can't hear you.
Do you know if there's anything in place for how often they update the lines and things that they do have in place as well?
No, there isn't. You know, they try to stay competitive. But the problem is, is, you know, back when phone lines were run, electric lines were run originally, there were state and federal subsidies to do all of that. There are no subsidies right now, so a lot of them are not reinvesting in their lines. There are companies that are coming through that are running fiber optic now. I know Northeastern Telephone, N E P, they are running fiber lines up through the valley now and doing some connection work. So they are one of the ones that are upgrading, trying to stay with the latest technology. Any other questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, Dana Rockwell. I've been trying to get a better understanding of the county's Act 13 money. So I submitted a right-to-know law request back on February 28th. And on March 7th, I was replied to by a former county clerk, Martin Kane. However, I feel that my first answer... first question was not answered. I wanted to know what kind of capital reserve fund balance that we had from 2012 to 2019. And I never did truly get that question answered. I got the submissions from each year's dispersals, which shows that from 2013 on, everything went into the capital reserve. So I was just wondering if we have a significant balance in that? Now, it's hard to find that information on the county's website.
No, there isn't. Basically, the reporting function that PUC put in place is... has a lot of faults to it. We've addressed that with the PUC and with the legislators. And for some reason, they don't want to change the reporting function of how we have to report the Act 13 money. So basically, reporting is what do you do with the money of the year that you get it? It doesn't ask for what you do with it after that, just the year that it gets. Now, of course, in our county, we don't spend it the year that we get it because you never know what you're going to get. Because it's dictated by the number of wells and the activity and everything else, it could change. So we budget it the following year, and then the money is put to use in the following year. So, whatever is received this year, we'll take and be budgeted in next year's budget and go through the budget next year and be used next year.
Is there any convenient place on the county's website where we can look at dispersments from prior years?
As to how it was?
Yeah, where it was spent, basically.
Oh, no, but you could, there's nothing on the website. I mean, that's a pretty detailed report. I mean, you could file another right-to-know and ask for the, how the money was actually spent, and then they could get that for you.
Well, I did request some dispersals from 2018, which I got, and it shows about half of the amount of money being dispersed. So, I thought perhaps there would be some left in the general reserve or capital reserve fund.
And you're correct, it wasn't all used, but that Act 13 money has been budgeted in 2019 to be used in 2019.
I just didn't know if there was any state accountability, because it's supposed to only be used for 13 different categories of spending, even if it's reserve and the capital reserve, and now it seems to be difficult to determine if that's truly the case.
Well, we've been audited once already by the Auditor General, and we have, you know, even though he didn't like us buying a car for the district attorney's office, it was still well within the confines of the Act 13 funding that's there. If you look at the Act 13 funding areas that you can spend it on, the legislators, when they wrote that, made it very vague and very open, so, you know, there's all kinds of things that you can do. So, you know, we've complied with the regulations. We've spent it in areas that we could spend it and where we're allowed to spend it.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, you know, each year's Act 13 money was completely used the following year, if there's a bunch of savings that's adding up?
Yeah, there's no bunch of savings. You know, there's been several projects that have been done here. We use the Act 13 money where we can to free up other money. We've got over $10 million worth of renovations we've done to facilities to get them up to being ADA compliant and being safe for our employees. We also had a pension fund that was $13 million in the red that had to be fixed. So, all of that done, was done without, of course, raising taxes or borrowing money. And we also gave back $5 million in taxes over the last eight years out of the Act 13 money, too.
So, pension funds can be cracked with Act 13 money?
Pension fund, well, as I said before, we use the money in areas we could out of the Act 13, which freed up other dollars, which was used to take and make the pension fund whole. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Oh, excuse me. Is Leslie Richards, the Secretary of Transportation, still scheduled to come here?
Still scheduled. I have her on the schedule. She's going to be with me on May 3rd, and we'll be doing a tour of the county and showing her the relids. It's been a long time coming to get her here, to see what deplorable condition our state roads are in. But it took the work of the commissioners, working with our state reps and senators, to finally get her to acknowledge that she's going to come here. And then I guess from here, she's going to Tioga and Sullivan County after us. So, we're going to get her for a four-hour tour, and I know it sounds like the SS minnow, but a four-hour tour and then a meeting with some key people to talk about the conditions and what her plan is going to be. Actually, I was just at a meeting this week on transportation, and what they're all saying from the transportation study that's going on in Harrisburg now is that they're losing billions and billions of dollars because of different programs and stuff. And, you know, just the loss they've got right now on the sales tax for the, for fuel and for gasoline has like a billion-dollar impact at the state for funding for PennDOT. And of course, trying to get them to understand, well, when you've raised your gas prices so high, it's cheaper to buy it someplace else, you've priced yourself out of the market, so now you collect less, you sell less gasoline and less diesel fuel because people buy it in New York State and New Jersey. So, they don't seem to understand that. They actually have said that, you know, the interstate highway system, right now, they need $2.5 billion for the interstate highways and bridges. And they need, the national highway system and bridges needs another $1.8 billion. And then, of course, $1.2 billion for public transportation. And their risk that they say that they're dealing with is that, as I get down in here, they say that federal transportation funding reduction. Right now, in 2021, the Highway Trust Fund, the Federal Highway Trust Fund is insolvent, and so they're going to start losing revenue out of that going into the state, and that's going to be about a $6 billion impact to the state of Pennsylvania. Of course, their idea is that, well, we should raise the federal tax on gas to get more money into the system. And I said, "Well, when you do that, you put yourself even at a higher price and put yourself out of the market." So, then the next was the vehicles, uh, sales tax. Act 89, if it gets repealed, the sales tax transfer for the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission, that'll have an impact of like $3.6 billion. And then the next one is the, there's pending litigation on the Pennsylvania Turnpike that, for their multimodal and transportation fund, that's got a $2.2 billion issue in it also that they're looking at. Then they've also got the issue of the money they're making into public transportation, $450 million a year, which has a $2 billion effect on the budget. Then they've got the State Police Transfer Statutory Revision Fund. A lot of people don't realize the State Police Fund is also in with the transportation fund, because under the Constitution of Pennsylvania, it stated that the funding for transportation also has to pay for the safety, which, under the safety, falls to State Police, so it tries to fund that, too. So, that's another $1.8 billion impact. Then, of course, they've got, well, actually, in the motor fuel sales and vehicle license and fees combined, they're looking at about a $4.9 billion risk through 2029 and 2030 on that. So, I mean, it's a huge problem. They've got all kinds of issues. They spend more money than they bring in, and at the same time, as you can see in Susquehanna County, they don't spend enough money here to fix the roads here. The actual operating budget for Susquehanna County hasn't changed since 2014 for the amount of money they have to fix the roads in this county. So, a lot of the issues we're going to talk about when she gets here, of course, is our drainage issues, the ditches, either the lack of ditches or the ditches that are so deep, if you go into them, you're never going to get out of them, the poor condition of the shoulders, the roads, roads that were paved a year or two ago that continue to fall apart even though they were just done, and also the slides that we have in this county. We have several, we have one or two left in the Susquehanna Depot area or Oakland Borough area, and we have the ones they've always worked on. We have ones on 167, we have ones on 106, and we have ones on 267, and so there's lots of slides they have to deal with. So, it's a matter of getting here and taking them around, showing them the roads and the issues, and seeing what they can do to fix everything. So, that's where we are on the roads.
I missed the last commissioners' meeting because I was meeting with Senator Sabatini from Philadelphia, and we were there to talk about ag issues, but we also brought up transportation because he's on the transportation committee. And I thought it was interesting, yourself, Representative Pickett, Representative Fritz, Senator Yoff, all said they couldn't meet with Mr. Richards. He said he meets with her regularly. He's from Philadelphia.
Yep.
What can I say?
Well, there you go. You know, if it's Philadelphia, Harrisburg, or Pittsburgh, they get all the attention they want. When you come north of Interstate 80, it's a huge problem.
I must admit, though, Senator Sabatini was very helpful and very interested in our problems.
Anything else?
Just going back to the Act 13 money, you know, we talked about the disrepair of our roads. The county contributes some money from Act 13 to kind of bridge that funding gap.
Well, no, you wouldn't want to use your local tax dollars to take care of a state issue or a state problem. This is a state responsibility, and the state also gets over, the state has gotten over $1 billion of Act 13 money, and they should be putting it back into the roads.
Well, it's not taxpayer money. It hasn't been, it's not an income tax.
Well, it's a benefit of taxpayers in this county, is what it is. And just like the benefit to the gambling casinos, to the people in their areas, and when the steel industry was in Pittsburgh, the steel industry, and the soda tax in Philadelphia that benefits everybody in Philadelphia.
Well, if our roads are in a crisis condition, we could potentially bridge some of that funding gap with Act 13.
Well, again, you would not use your dollars to take care of somebody else's responsibility. The state has the responsibility. You're paying enough in gas tax to have these roads fixed, and the state would love you to pay to fix their roads. As a matter of fact, we have 32 bridges that somebody took back from the state that the county is now liable for, and most of them cost over $1 million to fix. So, you know, the state would love to give you everything and have you pay for everything to be done. As a matter of fact, we have a bridge right now that the railroad was responsible for on Old Lud 11 in Great Bend Township that the PUC got involved with, and now because the railroad decided they don't want to have bridges anymore, went to a hearing with the PUC and PennDOT and everybody else, and now Great Bend Township is getting that bridge dumped on them with the criteria that they have to replace this bridge in five years, and it'll cost them over $1 million and a half. So, you know, there's programs we're working on to get that funded through the TIP program so the local taxpayers don't have to pay for it.
I was going to ask, is some of that money couldn't go just to at least some of the townships in the county that are in the state?
Townships are already getting a good chunk of money. They already get Act 13 money, and actually, every township and municipality in the state gets Act 13 money.
What about projects such as Ms. Kilmer's, this recreation center? Is that something that Act 13 money could be used for?
Well, then, that's a private investment. So, using it for a private investment, I mean, if it was a public investment, it might be a possibility, but as far as a private investment, then you can't use money for a private investment. You can't use any county dollars for private investment. The county code doesn't allow you to do that.
I was at a meeting, and the Elk Lake VOTEC came up as a discussion, and evidently, the Elk Lake VOTEC operation only has capacity for X number of students, and some students that would like to go to Elk Lake are being turned down, saying that they don't qualify somehow, the grades are too high or something, and then these limited openings at Elk Lake are only for kids that, in their view, need Elk Lake-type VOTEC training. Now, could Act 13 money be used to expand the Elk Lake operation, or maybe open a VOTEC operation that's like Susquehanna Community School or some other school to increase the opportunities for kids that want to go to and participate in Elk Lake activities, VOTEC activities?
Well, I'm not aware of any students that have been told that they can't attend Elk Lake School. We do meet and talk with Elk Lake regularly, and they have many programs that they've started up. They've also got an incubator program they've started also to get things going, too. And now, I believe, Forest City is also another school district that's looking to bring, I think it's Johnson College, in on board, too, for programs for kids also. So, there's programs out there, and if Mr. Stone over at Susquehanna has an issue, I'd be glad to hear from him.
So, no students have ever been turned away from Elk Lake?
Nothing. No students, well, I can't say no students ever have. I mean, they do have criteria. You have to have a certain grade level, and you have to meet certain criteria. I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head the criteria, but they do have certain requirements that you have to meet. So, as far as I know, anybody that meets the criteria gets to go. Now, I do know at one time, there was issues where some school districts didn't want to send them for three years, they only wanted to send them for one year and things like that. They wanted to change the programs, but as far as I know, there isn't anybody that is eligible to go that isn't going. But we will definitely reach out to Elk Lake School and find out.
Yeah, good.
You got something?
Yeah, it's my turn. I'd like to introduce our first deputy treasurer slash tax claim, Rebecca Westcott. She's here in place of Jason. And our new chief clerk, Rob Hyde, who is sitting here. And I have a question. I just want to know where the actual location is in Kingsley, because I've been asking. I thought I knew, but I don't want to give out.
Yes, no, no, so you're not misinformed. I appreciate that, actually. So, the Mountain View School District has actually submitted a proposal to us about donating land, that they have some unused land. Near kind of Herb Kilmer Flagstone, I don't know yet, that might be a landmark, so kind of down there. Again, a total separate entity. We want to make sure that we're super inclusive with this. It's just like the county library, just like the Career Technology Center at Elk Lake. This is a county facility, not, you know, just a certain school district or town or anything like that. So, thank you.
I have something. I'd like to say that on April 27th, the Susquehanna County Tickboar Disease Task Force and the Susquehanna County Commissioners are holding an event. We have Dr. Daniel Cameron coming from Mount Kisco, New York. He's one of the top line doctors in the country. People come from all over the world to see this man, and he's graciously coming here to our county to put on a program for us. It will be at the Mountain View High School. Starts around 10 o'clock in the morning, and it'll probably run until about 12, 12:30, and it's free to the public, so please promote it. It's been on my Facebook page, please share it, and please come and get educated and learn how to protect yourself and your family and how to feel better if you're already sick. And we're very grateful he's coming. Thank you.
One last thing before we close. I am announcing today that we will have regular office hours for our economic development team. They will be in the county, and we will have an office for them, and that should open up in about the next two to three weeks, as soon as we get the Conservation District moved out of our other facility. So, they will be here, have office hours here. They're usually here at least two or three days a week now, but have had an office, so we will have a permanent office for them so that they will be available to meet with people there. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.